Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members, members of the public. Thank you for joining us tonight. As the mayor said, this was a topic, actually, it came up seven weeks ago at the June 2 meeting. There were several speakers who spoke at that meeting expressing concerns about the impacts of parking and beach access and so forth. And in the past seven weeks, of course, we've seen it and heard about it as well. So it's with us in real time. And at that June 2 council meeting, after hearing the input, having some discussion, I think it was at the end of the meeting. It was Councilmember Ruddick who specifically asked that we come back with a study session. And she was clear that it should be entitled, "The Impacts of Beach Access." I think the idea was, although there was focus on one solution during some of the public comment, that the city look at a program for permit parking. The final direction was, yes, come back with information about permit parking, absolutely. But please also look at the subject more broadly. And so that's what we've been doing the past five, six weeks in preparing for this study session. John Doughty, the Public Works Director and Maz, our city engineer, are going to make the presentation. They put quite a bit of work into it. You received their staff report, which was a pretty comprehensive report on the subject. And what they did to meet the directive of broadening the lens is they divided it into four, the possible options and solutions into four different categories. They call it off-street parking management, on-street parking management, signage and wayfinding, and then actually expanding parking, more parking. The permit, the program for permit parking falls under the second category, on-street parking management. So that will be absolutely touched on tonight. And if that's what the public would like to talk about, then of course, we're all ears to have that conversation and get the direction. So with that intro and just reminding everyone how we got to the study session tonight, we have about an hour and 20 minutes planned for this, so plenty of time. I will turn it over to John and Maz to go through their analysis and pros and cons, options, et cetera, of the various tools that we have to address the concerns that we heard. Thank you.
Yeah, and if you wouldn't mind, as you guys go through the report, you know, when I was reading the staff report, and I'm sure we all read it, but the history of the steps that were taken, I guess, what, in 2006, were of very high interest to me. So just, if you don't mind spending a little bit of time, and I know you probably will anyways, but that history aspect, I just, I didn't know all the history of that. So I'm curious, I have a couple of questions, actually. But I'll let you start with the staff report and we can get into it.
Thank you, John Doughty. I just want to do a quick kickoff, follow on to Bob's comments, and then I'll turn it over to Maz. This is primarily his project and his report, and I don't want to not allow him that opportunity. Just to again, follow on with Bob's comments. Clearly, our staff report in this presentation is focused on starting the conversation. It was not an exhaustive search for all the answers and all the potential answers. But it was, I think, a comprehensive enough approach to touching on many of the issues and things that we constantly or often are hearing from the community, you're hearing from the community and conveying to us. And we're seeing and witnessing as we're in the community. And so remember, for those in the audience and those in the council, this was never intended to be an exhaustive list, an exhaustive research effort. But again, just an opportunity to start the conversation about a number of things. Clearly, these issues are not new. In my almost six years here, this is much the same conversations has occurred almost every summer or every summer that I've been here about the concerns and issues. Clearly, I will say this, the COVID-19 has raised that concern to a greater level and to a higher level. And from a public health perspective that we've never had in the mix in prior years. So, and that, I think, is a basis for some of the conversation tonight, obviously, and for dealing with it. I think what, one of the things that we are trying to convey is that some of this, what seemed simple on the cover, on a quick look and everything with that, are not as simple as they may be. You may or may not be aware that we just processed last week with the planning commission, a coastal development permit, which is now in the process for appeal process. We haven't, we haven't received an appeal for changing the parking fees at Poplar, for example. So anything and everything dealing with parking is within the jurisdiction and auspices of the coastal commission. And so we have to be very careful and very cognizant of those coastal access issues, which are legitimate concerns and issues and that balance point. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maz to run through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, Council and members of the public, Maz was a city engineer. I'm happy to be here tonight to provide a staff report on the alternatives to address the impact associated with beach access. We're going to conduct a public study session and then look at getting feedback from the council regarding next steps on where to focus our efforts. So John mentioned a little bit about the overview. Thank you both, John and Bob, for the introductions. So we'll go, we'll go over a little bit of a background. And then we, as Bob mentioned, we've broken it into four, about five different categories. Off-street parking, off-street public parking management, on-street parking management, signage and wayfinding, traffic calming and restrictions, a few additional parking alternatives. And then we'll talk, we'll open it up for discussion and go towards the next steps. So just a little bit of background. Obviously, there's a big concern with the amount of vehicles coming over to Half Moon Bay for beach access. There are two peak, two periods that we kind of identified. One is the peak, which is the summer, fall, where we see the largest number of visitors. But we also want to mention that off-peak, we do have, we also have folks that come visit off-peak, although it's not as robust of a group of people. But there do seem, there do, there is a good number of folks that come here around. And wanted to highlight that the primary mode of transportation for folks has been private vehicles with the lack of public transit options, especially now with COVID-19-related concerns and issues. Private vehicles have been the primary mode of visitors coming to the coast side. And of course, we have parking demands with each one of those vehicles that makes their way over to this area. There are the parking demands that come along with them. And then, of course, the COVID-19-related concerns that have been brought up recently with the health orders and the trying to limit the spread of the virus. So with that, I'll talk a little bit about off-street public parking management and a little bit more of the background. And I'll, we'll dig into a little bit more specifically with the, when we get to the off-street parking regarding the pass permit application that the city had went through. So as far as the public beach parking lots, we did a survey of some of the local beaches with available public parking lots on the coast side. We started as far north as Surfers Beach and went as far south as Manhattan or Three Rocks Beach, which is near Canyada Verde access points. These public beaches, for the most part, are $10 per day, which is about 12 hours. For the, there are some cases where parking is not per price, is free parking. For example, the Manhattan and Three Rocks Beach does have free public parking. But for the majority of these beach parking lots, they are $10 per day. And as John mentioned, the Poplar Beach, we are looking towards shifting toward the same pricing model as the state beaches. We did a, we did a, we did an update of all, we did a survey of all the different parking spaces available. I have it on this graphic here, showing the different locations of the parking lots approximately with the, about, with the amount and number of, with the approximate number of spaces available. And I say approximate because some of these parking lots, especially state beach parking lots, the lines have faded. It's a little hard to tell exactly where it is. So in those cases, I took just kind of a basic square footage of the amount of each stall and just did a quick update based on, based on that number. Poplar Beach, for example, we, I have about 80 spaces. That takes into account some of the unmarked spaces that we have and the available horse question parking that's also available over there. Overall, we're looking at about 900 public parking spaces mixed out throughout. The biggest, the main factor is that we can probably squeeze in another 3% to 5% of spaces, depending on the parking lot we're looking at and the ability to reconfigure some of the parking stalls. So we could increase it by a small percentage. Some of the other improvement alternatives that we researched and looked through, there are parking lot upgrades that have, that are potentials, such as electronic pay stations and real-time parking occupancy. Now, the important piece with this is that we do control one parking lot, which is the Poplar Beach parking lot. For this to be a success, we would need to get state participation on the state beaches. Looking at the cost of the infrastructure and the number of beaches that we would want to include, we were looking at about six in addition to Poplar. We estimated the cost to be about $100,000 to $150,000. And that's for the equipment, as well as the, as well as the installation and some of the operational costs to set that, the accounting system up. Obviously, there's also ongoing maintenance costs that have to be accounted for that we can provide more information on. There's also additional signage. We've looked at the possibility of incorporating additional signs to direct folks to other, the other beaches, so that we have a, we can, we can show the network of parking spaces that are available throughout the coast side. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to signage and wayfinding. Another concept that has been discussed is the possibility of shuttles and basically having, having people park in the downtown areas and having public or private shuttles that could take folks down. There are some, there are opportunities for that. There is, there is a considerable amount of public parking available in the downtown area. However, we would have to look at the operational costs of a shuttle. We've talked to, we can talk to Sam Trans and other agencies that have shuttle capabilities to see if it's feasible. But without the ridership and the numbers to support it, it may be a little challenging to do. And there is a high probability that there would not be the cost recovery that we would be looking for to implement a system like that. Talk a little bit about on-street public parking management. The residential, residential areas near the public beaches. Obviously, there's, there's, these public, these public streets are available for public parking. A lot of folks that are coming to visit the coast side do park in those areas during the peak season. Of course, throughout the rest of the year, we do see that. But especially during the peak times, we have higher amounts of traffic. We have higher vehicular speeds. There are obviously pedestrian and bicycle safety concerns. And now we have the COVID-19 exposure that's added an additional concern to these, to the on-street parking system. One of, one of the main, one of the main solutions that has been brought up by many, by a few individuals is permit parking programs. And to talk a little bit about the background here, in 2006, the city actually entered into and adopted nighttime permit parking. And that was over the course of a couple of years where the permit parking in the Marimar and Naples neighborhoods looked at limiting, looked at doing some sort of a parking permit control. And what was originally started and what ended up being the final product was vastly different. Originally, it was intended to be the impacts of nighttime permit parking, but as well as overflow parking going to the beaches. What ended up happening was, after, after an appeal by the coastal commission, the city went back and went through another, the formal process of appealing. And what was ultimately approved was a much shorter duration of prohibition of parking at nighttime, from midnight to 4:00 a.m. And there was a news, there's a newspaper article in the Half Moon Bay Review that I've cited in the report that I thought was really interesting as a snapshot into what had happened collectively there. In summary, the, there was a few folks that were interviewed for that, for that article. And the ultimate, the ultimate discussion from the residents in the area was that the time limit did not really equate to any impact, beneficial impacts that they, that they were hoping for. And to date, it's, it's still, there's still signage in place. However, the city has, has not been implementing a lot of those permit parkings over the last couple of years. And so that's, that's, in the crux of the nutshell is, it's, we were able to implement that limited duration nighttime permit parking program. However, it was a much smaller parking program than what was originally intended. And that, that kind of goes in line with the coastal commission's oversight on this. They've long held an opposition to parking programs in coastal areas. They, it is seen as a limitation on one of the core principles of the coastal act, which is maximizing access to the, to the coast for the public. The city of Newport Beach has an example. We've cited an example there where they've gone back and forth over the last two years on some sort of a permit parking program for some, for some development areas that they had moving forward. And over the last two years, they've approved a program. It's been appealed and they've been going back and forth since then. The overall neighborhood consensus is, would also be needed. That's another piece that would be, that would need to be reviewed in more detail. There are, there would be a limitation to the number of cars that any individual on any of the streets have. In the past program, there was permit, there were two, two cars assigned to each residential unit that would be allowed to park on the public, on the public street. Anybody else would be cited. And enforcement would move on from there. For, there was no visitor parking for that one. So there could, you know, if we do anything, there would, that would be a consideration that we'd have to consider to look into. How many visitors per residential unit would we be looking at? There, you know, there's a certain demand and number of spaces available. So we would have to look at all that. And there is also the initial costs and ongoing administration, operational costs. I did an example of a smaller section, just to kind of give a frame of reference for costs. I looked at Poplar Street from first to Railroad. For those three blocks and the immediate adjacent side streets, it was about $75,000 just for the signage that would be needed in order to be able to enforce it. So there's some considerations. It's the size, the size of the sign is pretty standard, but the spacing between the, between the signage is about 100 to 150 feet. So when you add all that up for that, for that neighborhood, it was about $75,000. There, the ongoing, there's, obviously, there's, there's ongoing administration and operational costs associated with, with any parking permit program. Those costs are typically borne by the users. So depending on the size of the program, hypothetically speaking, there could be some savings of doing a larger program, although there could be challenges to adoption and appeal, obviously. So with that, I'll, I'll go into signage and wayfinding. And I can certainly come back on this topic and discuss more after we go through the presentation. Another piece that we wanted to highlight was just signage and wayfinding. What we've noticed is a lot of, a lot of folks, you know, they plug in a beach in their, in their mobile app and they set their navigation, they kind of come through, or they know of, you know, certain, certain beaches that maybe eager to access. And so, long story short, folks, you know, they have their, a way of coming and their creatures of habit, and they will come to the beaches that they're familiar with. One option is, you know, one thing that we've noticed is the lack of signage directing the westbound visitors, specifically to the beaches to the north. There are some signage as you're coming down 92, but with, you know, changeable message signs, with traffic, they're, they're, they can be easy to miss. Some of the signs, these more standard brown state signs that you see on the state highway system, they've lost their reflectivity. There's some, they're, they're not as easy, as easy to see as they used to be. So that's, those are some of the things that we can, you know, those are some of the simple options. You know, update some of the age and missing signs along the highway. Highway 1 and 92 specifically. You know, we can look at, then there's two ways we can look at doing that. You know, the, the cost-effective way would be to request Caltrans and State Parks to look at that. They, it is their responsibility, although, you know, maintenance needs are high and funds are low. So when that happens, it's a guess at best. We could also adopt a project and utilize local funds to move forward with that. It would still be a process. We would still need to go through, through the formal approval from Caltrans to get the permits to be able to install. There is a cost associated with, with going through that process as well. But certainly, that's something that we can do if that's the wish of the community and the council. There's also other, other alternatives that we can consider. You know, beach wayfinding is, it was a little lacking when I was doing some searches through other, kind of looking at the state available signage. So I have these, you know, the more basic signs, the coastal access and the P, the standard P for parking signage that you see on highway signs. Now, one, one example that I have here is from Dana Point, where they've looked at establishing wayfinding signage within their jurisdiction. And through that, they have identified the different types of features that are specific to their community. So that, that's another alternative. If we wanted to do something that is a little bit more unique and specific to Half Moon Bay, would be to look at doing some sort of a wayfinding signage. And we have a CIP project that has been in the books regarding wayfinding. And we can incorporate, you know, these beaches, beach access directions as part of that program. And if that, so that could be something that we could re-energize and bring back to the forefronts, if that's the wish, if that's the will of the council. Another thing that we can look at is directional signage. And this is more, this is more regarding local, local streets. So as we get to some of these streets like Poplar and Kelly, as folks are getting to these beach destinations, a lot of times, they get to the parking lot, and especially for Poplar, the number of spaces are limited, and we do have a high volume of individuals coming down, coming there. And so a lot of times, they get there and they realize, okay, the parking lot's full. And so they, after circling once, it's, you know, it's a pretty quick circle through that, through that parking lot. They'll make their way back to Railroad and they'll start looking in the residential areas for public parking and starting, start to gather their cars and make their way. So what we can do is provide some signage that at key locations, as people are exiting some of these parking lots, to identify and show some of the other beaches that are available. And, you know, a lot of folks, they're coming to these, to Poplar specifically, but also the other state beaches, but the other, but the state beaches as well. They're, they're bringing a lot of equipment with them. They're bringing coolers, they're bringing umbrellas. And although this may not be specific to today's concerns, the long-term impacts will always, will be, continue to be there as people make this a destination to come and not just passively go through, but, but to camp out and to have gatherings. And so a lot of times, they're going to have a lot of equipment and materials that they're bringing with them. And if we provide directional signage to highlight some of the other beach parking that is closer to the access points, some individuals may choose to go to these existing parking lots that have availability. And that kind of goes back to the other discussion on the technology that, again, if we can link these pieces together, we can better provide data as far as availability of parking spaces at these lots. We still have, there will still be individuals that are looking at, at not, at minimizing any expenses. So there will, there may still be folks that are utilizing the public parking spaces that are available in some of the residential. We may not get, get that with this, with this option. But we, there are a considerable amount of folks that would be that this would help if we were to do something like this. Now, with, with a lot of the conversations that have been around beach access and parking, another piece that, that has been, I'm sorry. Can everybody still see my screen? Okay, I was having some feedback issues. So another piece that we've talked, that has come up routinely is traffic calming. A lot of, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the vehicular access and beach access comes, the number of vehicles, especially during those peak, peak times. And a lot of, a lot of conversation has been, a lot of questions have been brought up about different types of calming, traffic calming measures that we could implement to try to at least reduce speeds and, and provide a better safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and residents alike that are traversing these streets. These traffic calming measures in general help to reduce speeds and provide safety. We, I do want to provide a quick update. It's been something we've been working on over the last few months. But with the conversation today, we wanted to highlight this. That we've, the engineering group has been working on neighborhood traffic calming policy. And we would like to, we would be, we'll be bringing something back to the public for comments and city council approval in the fall. That's a little bit more comprehensive. And what this, what this intent of this policy is, is to standardize the process for initiating a traffic, neighborhood traffic calming program. But also to highlight some of the toolbox elements, if you will. Some of the different technical pieces that we can do specific to our standards and be able to have a kind of a cookie cutter type example list that we can choose from, so that we have, we can reduce our maintenance and operational costs. So this will be something that we will be bringing forward in the next couple of months. For any, for any of, any of these improvements, and some of them will have, there'll be ranges, but there are some significant financial considerations when we talk about these types of implementation. Because we're talking about physical improvements to the, to the transportation network. And each one will have its own cost and considerations to go through. And I just, I do want to note one thing that I do get a lot of requests as a city engineer for stop signs as a, as a method. A lot of times, it's, it's, it's brought to my attention as a method for traffic calming. And I do want to mention that it is against California law to utilize stop signs as a traffic calming device. There are certain warrants that need to be met. And we do an engineering study for each one of these measures that we, each one of these intersections that we look at implementing stop control. But, but one of the considerations is not traffic calming. We look at volumes, we look at speeds. We look at volumes, we look at site distance. But speeding is not, is not one of the factors under the California law. So I just wanted to highlight that, because we do get, I do get those two tied quite a bit. So here's some examples that I wanted to just share, just some ideas. So we have the speed humps at the top left. We have a speed hump at the top left. And these, these could be in different configurations. The image that I have shown here is a pre manufactured speed hop. It's, it's a high, it's a highly durable polymer plastic blend. And there are, this is one of the alternatives that we can, that we can implement for speed humps. There's also the conventional asphalt speed humps that could be constructed for any new pavement project. There's also the conventional asphalt speed humps that could be constructed for any new pavement project. Each one has its, its pros and cons. These could be removed without doing significant improvements. And we can also, we can also do, we can also remove them as needed. We also, on the, on the top right, we have what's, what we consider to bulb out. This is at the library at Miramontes and Correa Streets. We have chicanes at the bottom right. Chicanes are essentially a, for, for wider streets, they could be a curvature of the roadway with physical improvements such as medians and bulb outs to provide a little more of a meandering path. And I like this image and we can, we can refer back to this. This image just kind of highlights some of the, the different elements together. A kind of a traffic circle with pedestrian and bulb out elements and, and having a different type of control at, at a look, at a urban, at a less urban intersection. A lot of these, I do want to mention that a lot of these have been gone, have gone through and been vetted through the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and as part of the bicycle pedestrian master plan. A lot of these have been touched on as far as concepts, these traffic calming devices. And what we'll do with this, the more formal policy is to add the technical specifications to that. But a lot of this was made possible by all the efforts that have been done by the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, our planning commission and, and council and all the different groups that have worked on that master plan. Also wanted to highlight some of the other more drastic traffic calming alternatives. These would be road closures. The top left image here, you can see where a street, it was basically. Sidewalks with pylons, with dead end signage along the street to, to basically close off the residential street and, and deter, and basically cut this off as an entrance or an exit into the neighborhood. These, there, there are, there are a lot of ramifications with this. One of the biggest issues is just the overall flow of traffic. Obviously this changes the traffic pattern. So anywhere that we would look at, anything that we would look to utilize this type of an improvement would have to be closely analyzed as far as traffic patterns to make sure that we're not causing any adverse impacts to any of the other streets, any of the entrances from the state highway system and exits to the, exits back to highway one. So just want to highlight that. The other piece with the dead ends and some of those elements, these more drastic measures, obviously it'll, it does work during, you know, high peak demand, but it's, there, there are things that will not go away after the demand's gone. So the, the impact on local traffic will remain regardless of, of the season. We would have to go through any, any, any changes would be, could be an impact to emergency service response time. So anything that we do look at and consider would be in close step with police and fire to ensure that we don't have any impacts to emergency response time. We also, from an environmental perspective, there's also the impact of the, increasing the amount of vehicle miles. So if we have, if, if somebody take, if it takes somebody longer to get out of a neighborhood than it would prior to, it, it would increase the amount of mileage, although incrementally over time it does add up as well as the potential greenhouse gas emissions. And of, and of course, the, there are significant financial considerations for implementation of these more drastic measures. And, and doing it right the first time is very important as we do with any of our construction projects. Doing something quick and, and inexpensively, a lot of times we'll come back with additional costs in the future. I'll quickly go into a few additional parking alternatives before we open it up to questions and public conversation. So there's been some of the other alternatives that have been discussed and brought up, increasing parking at existing beach parking lots and, and. This is more specific to Poplar, although we, with, with state parks to see if there's opportunities for restriping. There are, there are, there are a lot of significant issues regarding the Poplar Street, the Poplar Beach Parking Lot specifically. There are permitting concerns as well as environmental review concerns. I have a, I have a map that I'll show in a second. Here, here we go and I'll go back to the other one. But here's our Poplar Beach Parking Lot. You may recall, this is from our gateways plan, Poplar Beach Gateways Plan. We have limited availability, ability to expand. Right here to the east of the, of the parking lot is denoted, this is the blue shaded area, sensitive habitat. We have some sensitive habitat on the north as well. This yellow line constitutes the twenty fifty bluff edge due to erosion and sea level rise as far as our current estimates. So any expansion to the west would be temporary and, and, and difficult to, to implement knowing that in thirty, thirty years or less, it could, we would have to be removing pieces of it as well as any coastal commission oversight. And then on the, on the east, further to the east, we have private lots where we would have to go through a, where, where, we would have to go through land purchase, which would, which would increase costs obviously. We've also looked at the, the possibility of identifying additional public parking areas. Hatch Elementary School Parking Lot was, was something that we would discuss as part of the last two-by-two subcommittee with, with two career unified school district board members and two of our city council members. But outside of that, there aren't, there aren't too many other public, private or public parking areas that we could utilize without having some sort of a shuttle system in place. So with that, that's, that, that's my initial staff report and presentation for this, for our possible alternatives. And I'm happy to answer any questions and concerns you may have.
Okay, thank you. Very in-depth, lots of good information there. Should we open it up for public discussion? I'd like to hear from the public before we have the, the staff, the city council weigh in. Are there any public hands in the air to talk on this subject?
I have one hand raised so far. So we'll start with James Benjamin and then if anyone else would like to provide comments, please use the raise your hand feature. James, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, council. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak for a moment. I'm James Benjamin. I live at four hundred Pillar Citos Avenue. I'm a member of the planning commission speaking to you tonight as an individual. I wanted to provide you with some background to supplement the staff report. With respect to the two thousand and five nighttime permit parking program, I was one of the appellate of that, of that appeal to the coastal commission with former commissioner Sophia Freer. Our position was that it concentrated the folks who wanted to park really close to the beach at the night in one neighborhood, namely Casa Del Mar, namely Pillar Citos Avenue. And our position was either there should be permit parking on all of the streets that were immediately adjacent to the beach or there should be permit parking on none of them. It is true that Redondo Beach Road and Naples Road are also very close to the beach, but I believe there are parking restrictions on both of those roads that are not present on this one. I note that at the time that I learned from Chris Curran that they were not going to be supporting the appeal. They told us, he told us that if it was a matter of law enforcement, it was a city problem, but if it was a matter of protecting coastal resources, it was something that we could go back to the coastal commission and hope, get help that way. I'd like to point out that since that time, we have had visitors routinely park on the street even when Venice parking was full. This was well before the COVID nineteen matter. I have a rather graphic picture that shows the aftermath of someone relieving himself on my neighbor's front yard behind his shrubs, complete with toilet paper. And this has become more frequent during the COVID period. So I think there's a water quality argument that could be made, public safety, public health kind of argument. But it's also obviously an enforcement matter and there doesn't seem to be bandwidth for that kind of thing as a practical matter for us. I was looking through the coastal act and I noted that the provisions of coastal act, coastal access are well-defined in coastal act three oh oh one oh. It does say it's consistent with public safety. So there is an angle that you might consider if you want to pursue this matter a little further. Apparently someone has posted the existence of a mythical Kehoe Beach. And so we get about a dozen cars an hour during peak times where people come looking for the Kehoe Beach access. When Mercedes Benz stopped and sent up his drone to find a way to get to the Kehoe Beach. So we know that we're popular. We understand that they want to avoid paying and still be very close to the beach. I don't want to diminish the problems in other neighborhoods. The popular concern you're considering is quite real. But I wanted to add this dimension to your understanding of the concern so I can feel like I've helped my neighbors tell the story to you. I am happy to provide you with any information that I can about the two thousand and five nighttime parking permit matters and anything that you'd like to know about how visitor parking has adversely affected our neighborhood. Thanks for your time and I'll stand by.
Jimmy, thanks for your input. Thanks for serving on the planning commission as well. Julie Barr?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for listening to me this evening. My name is Julie Barr. I also live on Pillar Citos Avenue at seven nine two Pillar Citos. And I just wanted to compliment the city staff, Mr. Dougherty and Mr. Bershord Genia for their report. I thought it was very thorough and comprehensive. It really seems like the parking permit issue, as you've laid it out, is a non-starter. Even if there was consensus within neighborhoods to do this and to pay the high price for the parking permit program that it would, there'd be a hard stop at the level of the coastal commission, public safety notwithstanding. The, and all the traffic calming options that you laid out are not only expensive, but have some significant downsides in terms of public safety. But the other two options seem like real opportunities and low-hanging fruit to my mind. The Casa Del Mar neighborhood, as you probably know, is immediately adjacent to Dunes Beach and Francis Beach parking lots. But the Dunes Beach parking area in particular is grossly underutilized because they often have the overflow lot closed. They don't maintain the bathrooms in the overflow lot. They've put up porta potties, which they also don't maintain regularly. And I've sent several pictures over the last two years of just piles of garbage from overflowing trash cans that are, that are not maintained. You can't see the striping anymore in those lots and the weeds grow up through the asphalt. And it looks like there's nearly two acres of asphalt underutilized. The main parking lot for Dunes Beach, when the beach has been open ninety-five to or more percent of the time, it's not staffed by anyone, which is just mind-boggling to me because if they charged ten dollars per car and they filled up the lot and there's turnover all day, it seems like that lot would easily pay a minimum wage worker to stand there and make sure that people were parking. So I, I understand that the state is short of money, but it doesn't seem to me that our tax dollars are being used to maintain Half Moon Bay state beaches and the parking areas whatsoever. And I think that's a shame and a crime and it's been going on for most of the twenty-five years that I've lived on Pillar Citos. But it's just getting a lot worse. I, I like the idea of the electronic pay parking and I think there's a real opportunity there. I, I wasn't clear on why the city couldn't move forward with that for the Poplar Lot and without the state also doing that in their three lots. Perhaps you could explain that to us, but, but I do fully support that notion and I realized there would be an upfront investment in the technology, but it's cheaper than staffing those areas with a human and you would also get a better and more accurate collection of data about parking utilization in those four lots. With all due respect to the city's design staff, I don't find the sign that you showed several times of the four parking areas in Half Moon Bay intuitively obvious, particularly if I'm driving by quickly with a car. I like something with greater clarity. The Dana Point signs looked more intuitive to me. I think as a city, you know, we spent money replacing all the neighborhood street signs a few years ago with the Half Moon Bay city logo. It seems like we could do something equally smart with city-specific signage towards the beaches, including the state beaches, at least from highway one. So I'm, I'm interested to, I'm frustrated as a resident as to why the city has not been able to partner effectively with the state beach staff to get these things done. And it seems like the state beaches are, are not maintained at all and, and it's not only an eyesore, but a public health hazard to, to have them remain in their current condition. And it, and it further impacts the parking in our neighborhood. So thank you.
Cool. Good stuff. Let's, can, can we try to answer a few of those questions? Cause I think you brought up some very valid points. I'm gonna try to rehash a couple of them and see what answers we can get. Number one, the, the part, the paid parking unification piece. Do you want to talk about why, I mean, obviously we could, I think, just enact it on our own. It wouldn't give the other areas that exist and people could then move to those areas would be my sense of why we'd want everybody to do it at once. But Maz, you want to discuss that?
Let me, let me just, I'm, I'm unmuted, so I'll just roll with it.
Yeah.
Well, just to, just a reminder to, to the public, we do have the electronic pay station at Poplar. It was installed several years ago, ten years almost, and it has been updated, upgraded over time. And we're in the process of an upgrading to put it to an app option, so a touchless option. We do have the data available to us from that point. Our issue and concern is that that data is only as good as, as what we have for Poplar. And frankly, on any given really busy peak time day, we know the parking lot is pretty much full. We don't even have to go to the data to know that it's full. That, that is just, just that way. And today was a lighter day when I went out and it was still half-full. But the issue we're having and what we're really suggesting is, is that without the state looking at particularly their three major parking lots and connecting those into that same form of electronic pay station and, and accumulating that information together, it's little value for us to basically be able to say the Poplar Beach Lot is pretty much full or it has three spaces left or whatever. It's really about trying to deflect and get folks down to those other areas. And again, we've talked about it, you know, the ambitious and, and looking down the road really, the, the future is, could we look at actually identifying the number of spaces available in those lots real time at ninety-two and Main Street or before you get to that point, so you can make the decision whether to go right or left or make a U-turn and, and forget about it. So those are the kind of things that, that we're, that we're really envisioning down the road, but, but just trying to focus on the here and now and the short-term issue with that. I would also respond on this point, and Bob can speak to it and I think he's unmuted as well. I think our relationship with part, state parks is exceptionally good right now. And I think we are doing a, a, a very good job in terms of coordinating the efforts. And Bob has really spearheaded that as the city manager. We are at their mercy and frankly, the staff really who does the local beaches and everything in San Mateo County down to Santa Cruz want to do the right things. They're fighting for the, for a pot of money that stretches from here to the border and up to the Oregon border and over to the Sierras. And so the, that's a challenge and how do you make that work and deal with it? But certainly we think that, that between the continued work and those efforts and working with Caltrans, we can effectuate improvements and change that will be better for all. Bob, did you have anything?
Well, let me just, oh, go ahead, Bob.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
So, so I, I mean, and I'll add, I'll add a couple of topics for you to discuss. We have looked into before trying to take, like, be willing to, we agree with that overflow lot. And we know which lots you're talking about that aren't utilized that much. And we've talked to state parks a little bit about having the city possibly lease those from state parks and take over the parking to make sure that we fill those more often. But I feel like the meters would do that as well. And Bob, you can talk to the efforts that have been done from that perspective. But also just in terms of partnering, I do know that Pacifica has a relationship with state parks, but the town actually oversees the, 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 the area as opposed to state parks. And do you want to talk about that relationship? And if that were a possibility ever in Half Moon Bay and just kind of throwing some stuff out there?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. A great topic. Actually, I think this topic came up in my job interview for this job. I can't remember exactly how it came up, but we got off tangent and started talking about the relationship with state parks. It was interesting. And being that I was coming from a large park district in East Bay, it was a top, it was a subject that was in my wheelhouse. So when I worked for the East Bay Park District, they managed three parks and they still do. State parks on behalf of the state, three very prominent parks over there in East Bay. So it's a model that's tested, as you just mentioned, Pacifica does it as well. And state parks went through, call it a revisioning process a few years ago. And because of their budget woes and other challenges that they had in their organization. And part, one of the tenants that came out of that revisioning was certainly that they should look for more opportunities to partner with nonprofits, private sector and other governments when it, when it makes sense. It is very delicate because they're a big organization and there's turf and there's pride and there's all that. And so John is correct. I knew it would, might be a long, slow process. But I, I thought that, you know, the first year was going to just be about building trust with state parks before we, you know, go further. And so we have done that. The relationship is good right now. John's absolutely right. And I agree with John and you, Mr. Mayor, that I think that the timing right now could be a really good time. We've built up the relationship. Times, you know, financially are probably going to be challenging for them as they are for us. We have broached it with them recently and, and threw it out there. Hey, how about if we took over Dunes and Venice? They were reluctant, as we expected. But I think that could be a, you know, that should be something we talk to them about. So whether we go all the way and actually enter into a lease and start managing those parking lots, which would include the revenue, obviously. And the speaker mentioned that there's a lot of revenue being lost. There's no doubt about it. That could be put back into those parks as opposed to going somewhere else in the state system. At the very least, getting them coordinated on the, on modern day kiosks to pay and having real time data for parking spaces is just, everyone agrees, I think that's a no brainer. So the time is right to push on them. And I think if that's the direction, and it certainly doesn't even need to be a direction from council, we're going to meet with state parks and, and start exploring those conversations. We need to, to get them on board and now is the time to do it.
Um, excellent. Were there other questions, before we even move to the other questions from that speaker? What, yeah, in terms of getting the automated pay pieces, you know, is that a process where we push state parks and they get funding? Is there other grant opportunities for those things through state parks? Does state parks have grant funding that they can access? And Debbie, you might have to weigh in on this because this is all out of my wheelhouse. But it seems like it's going to be a tough sell to get them to buy those machines. And yet I think it's a great option for the city overall. So how do we, how do we work that? Just under, trying to understand that?
So there are a variety of programs under Proposition 68 that give state parks considerable amount of funds to enhance access and educational opportunities in state parks. So I, I, I think there is some money there. But you know, the state has gone to great extent, Bob knows this, to, they've, they've changed the law to make it easier for local governments to enter into contracts with state parks to either manage the properties entirely or, you know, give them concessions over certain things like parking, restrooms, you know, potentially, you know, food, I guess. So that, you know, the law has definitely streamlined that process. Now, Bob's right, there is a culture at state parks, very slow moving, very protective of turf. Change comes very slowly. But I think that the foundation is there and, and, and we could push. And frankly, I think we should. You know, we need to decide what kind of a community we're at. You know, we're, we're a beach community. Do we want to enhance that vision of ourselves by, you know, focusing more resources on making it a better beach experience? I think we had a letter from Bill Ballson in Ocean Colony talking about that. You know, upgrading the restrooms, cleaning them, having electronic parking, having, you know, EV charging stations. I, I think it's worthwhile. It's a good complement to the hotels we have, you know, to make the beach experience great. So I would definitely want to move in the direction of finding a way to make it financially feasible to, to engage in those sorts of relationships. And maybe it's partnering with a private business or, or a nonprofit. But, and it, it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we should, I'd like us to move in that direction. You know, maybe there's camping opportunities there where people can rent spaces to do better camping or glamping or, or whatever it is, low cost accommodate, camping accommodations. So I think there are business opportunities there that I'd like to take advantage of. I, I do think that we have to focus on managing access, you know, across the jurisdiction. Distributed access, we don't want to burden, you know, one neighborhood or one beach, you know, too much. So access management is important for resource issues. But also, you know, greenhouse gas emission issues too, right? I mean, you want to, you want to do, you know, parking is part of a TDM program for reducing your, your impacts. So there's probably transportation grants that might, you know, help offset the cost of a pilot project, you know, for electronic kiosks across, you know, all the beaches or something like that. So, you know, it's a big project, there's a lot of moving pieces. But, you know, it could be done right and done comprehensively of economic benefit, you know, to the community. So I'll leave that piece there. But, um, you know, I think there are short term issues that need to be addressed in terms of impacts on neighborhoods. You know, the focus has to be to get people to the beaches, you know, in the official system, parking where parking can be accommodated and there's bathrooms and that sort of thing. But in the meantime, I think we have to deal with impacts on the neighborhoods. And, you know, one of the, I think with COVID, I think, you know, human density issues are kind of key, you know, managing those. And I know, I saw an article today that said that Florida's beach communities, which as we know are packed, density very high, their positivity rate is almost 26%. COVID positivity. That, that's high. So as a beach community, we know, we attract people from the outside and bring disease with them. And they're parking cheek by jaw, they're leaving garbage, they're among our residential neighborhoods. You know, I see this as a problem. So one way to get at the density issue would be like a safe parking program where we actually draw parking spaces, you know, on the streets of the neighborhoods where we can indicate them somehow, your car goes here. And then there's space between the next marked car parking place, right? And so we spread it out. I know, noticed like in Poplar and Alse Slerain, I don't know how some people park there and then get out because, you know, they're bumper to bumper. And there's been, you know, issues of cars hitting residential cars and driving off and all that stuff. So one way might be sort of a permit parking program is to actually mark the street where you can park safely. You know, so that reduces the density somewhat. It's not a permanent parking program, but it sort of gets at the issue of density, potentially reducing, you know, garbage impacts and all that sort of thing. So that's just one step. But I think we need to look at, you know, many pieces to get at this. There's going to be no, at least initially, no comprehensive approach. I know people are talking about closing the beaches and closing the parking lots now until we get a handle on the, the vaccine. There's issues surrounding that. But so I think we have to look at like short term mitigations. And then we have to look at, at a bigger picture of making this attractive place to access the beach safely and in a healthy way and, and bring in some bucks. So I'd like to hear from my fellow council members, you know, what, what they're thinking, you know, about this.
Okay, let's, let's, we'll, we'll move to council and then we can go back to, to public comments. And, and I like, and I'll, I'll just start off. I like the idea of short term because we've definitely got a problem right now with COVID and the influx. And I do think we need to have another conversation with Scott Morrow. And I know he's on our call tomorrow, so we can directly access him and ask some specific questions. But like, that's the short term piece because I agree. And then, you know, what we're talking about here with just like the paid parking meters, that's, you know, something like that I would imagine would be a long, that's a long time coming. That's not, that's not an easy thing, especially with securing grants and all the different pieces, the state parks pieces. So, um, yeah, definitely, definitely different, uh, different timelines associated with each piece. Feel free, council.
Mayor Eisen, if I could jump in, I think that we should conclude public comments before we move on to council member comments.
Even better, is, is, are there no more public comments?
We have five more public speakers still.
Okay. Well, I, I do think we need to give, how about we, can we just put that at rest for a minute? And then go to council and then possibly go back if there's time? Is that an acceptable move?
Let's go and hear the rest of the public first.
Oh, you do want to hear the public. All right. Let's hear the public then.
Okay. Sue Rainieri, go ahead.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to share my comments on the important topic of beach access. I thoroughly read the staff report as well as the reference coastal commission report on Newport. I noted a reference to the city's strategic plan. So I looked it up and it calls for enhanced safety for pedestrians, cyclists and motorists, promoting the health and wellbeing of children, youth, families, adults of all ages and abilities, and environmental sustainability in a green community. These are bold, but were the objectives during normal times. But right now during a global health pandemic, these are absolutely non-negotiable in order to protect the health and safety of the coast side community. With regard to the staff report, I must express dismay at the dismissive tone used to portray impacts on residents. I would not describe the last three months in Alse Slerain as increased traffic and congestion and in many cases, littering. As mentioned in two previous public meetings, current conditions in the neighborhood are unsafe. The neighborhood is overrun with traffic and parking. There are no safe paths of travel for pedestrians. Visitors are not wearing face masks and are leaving trash and human waste in our front yards. They're ignoring traffic signs and putting pedestrians and cyclists at risk. This situation is a clear violation of your strategic planning goal of a healthy community and it's only getting worse. The staff report has little sense of urgency with regard to solutions. Yes, the city was able to shut down beach access for a weekend. Thank you very much. But guess what? On Monday, they were back without their face masks and with their trash and human waste. We're in a pandemic. I found the comment that the coastal commission act requires reasonable parking and accommodation for all, which begs the question of what is reasonable and for whom? I would define it for the visitor as having access to restroom facilities and trash receptacles. I would define it for the residents as not being put in harm's way. I also found the coastal commission report interesting with regard to its reference to IP section 21 dot 30A dot 05O E2, which states that exceptions to requiring public parking can be made where there is substantial evidence of a public safety problem. What bigger public safety problem can there be than the situation we find ourselves in right now? The concern for public health merited the closure of parking and beaches for three days. The problem didn't go away, however, and the risk to public health continues. We're finding bloody tampons, used condoms, used toilet paper and human feces in our front yards. We're being exposed to this hazardous bio-waste on a daily basis. Alternative parking and signage won't change the current habits of the visitors. They all know they can overrun our neighborhoods, leave their trash, damage their cars and even for heaven's sakes, letting the goats out. I can't believe they did that. I respectfully request that the city investigate an emergency parking program in order to protect the health of the residents while other mitigation efforts are being investigated. This would allow us time to analyze how this might or might not work long term, but at least give us a break. I have seen the city move quickly when they want to, as evidenced by the July 4th closure of the beach. We were in a crisis on Memorial Day and now it's July 21st and we're having a study session. Please prioritize your strategic goal of healthy communities and please do it quickly. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good feedback. The, um, can we, can we talk about that real quick, real, like just openly? What, what we're going to do short term, COVID, all the people coming to the, the Half Moon Bay, it's, it's kind of, you know, we don't really have an answer for that right now. Currently. And I'm not sure how to gain, to gain one entirely because there's so many different jurisdictions involved. There's so many different orders from the governor involved. But then I've got, we've got residents of the community that need to be safe and kept out of harm's way. And as people keep coming, I mean, we all know what's happening. So what, what is, what should we do short term from that perspective? What are, do we have any options that really exist? I guess I'm, I'm going towards Bob on that one.
Maybe I can, maybe I can mention a little bit and then I can go from there. In my, in my research, unfortunately, obviously the coastal commission, commission's position has been over on these more specific long-term permit parking programs. With COVID-19, there was some preliminary discussion with the coastal commission staff regarding any potential. And there, there was not, there was not a lot of enthusiasm from their perspective. And I don't know if Bob wants to add anything regarding any potential, you know, any, any further investigation in, in that regard. And, but with the, with the larger parking program was, it's about a 50/50 chance. You know, every case obviously is, is unique in its own, in its own way. But for a long-term program, which would take about, it would take, you know, several months to, to a year plus to institute. It's a, it's about a 50/50. I don't know, I haven't heard of anybody instituting any emergency parking restrictions that were in my, in my research for this meeting.
Thank you, Maz, for just giving me a chance to think about the question for a second. It is a tough one, Mr. Mayor and members of council, and appreciate the speaker's comments and, and concerns and expression of this as a public safe, safety and health issue. We have put forth, yeah, a comprehensive staff report, but I would be the first to agree that nothing in there necessarily is really quick or necessarily would have immediate effects. The speaker did suggest at the end, at conclusion of her remarks, pushing for an emergency permit parking program. This is something I think we need to think about internally and the council should think about. Because the ramifications could be profound. So if we were to make certain findings, is what I meant, you know, that, that there was a health emergency and immediately impose parking restrictions, we have to be prepared for what might happen next. And my thinking off the top of my head is that would be immediately appeal to the coastal commission and we could find ourselves in a potential lawsuit. So it's something we need to think about. I understand the concerns expressed and the passion behind that. But doing something under an emergency order as suggested, I think we need to seriously think about before proceeding.
Yeah. And my, my, and Debbie Riddick will go to you next. But my understanding was Yeah. And my, my, and Debbie Reddick will go you next. But my understanding was that we would need Scott Morrow's uh, definitive approval to even move forward with such a process, to have any standing uh, in order to not have a lawsuit completely, uh, take us out of contention immediately. So.
That has been stated previously. We have that in writing, correct?
So just, just kind of throwing some pieces out there. So I, it's important everybody understands what we're up against and the research that's been done. So, um, please, Debbie.
So just a little context. Um, so for the last five years, um, the coastal commission and many other state agencies, um, the big idea is, um, increasing access to the coast and diversifying access to the coast and supporting equitable access to the coast. So, you know, lower cost accommodations programs, uh, spending money on grant programs to bring people from disadvantaged communities out for coastal experiences. The, um, the coastal commission now has one or two, I think it's two representatives who are there for equity purposes. And, um, so the whole sort of regulatory context now, one of the primary underpinnings is this, you know, concept of equity and rightly so, I think. So they are very alert to any efforts to backtrack on that. And, you know, gentrification, um, cutting off access to the beach through um, private encroachments like we've seen, like in Laguna Beach and Newport Beach. Because this, the coastal commission is on the warpath about this. So they are alert to anything that's going to smack of cutting off access to lower income or people who don't live in coastal areas. That is going to be an incredible uphill battle. So that's one piece. The other piece is they're not gonna cherry pick beaches in different communities. Okay, you can close, you can't. They're not gonna get into that. California's economy rests on a beach economy. You know, most of the state's population, most of the tourism happens in coastal areas. You know, they're not gonna like let Half Moon Bay shut down and not worry about Laguna Beach wanting to do the same thing and all that stuff. They're not gonna play that. So they will appeal if nobody else does, right? So there isn't gonna be any cherry picking done by the coastal commission. In fact, there will, there will be lawsuits, I guarantee you. So I think that whole route is, um, is a minefield. And I spent a lot of time thinking about this and looking about this. I work for a state agency involved in coastal zone management. Um, I'm in it up to here. I can tell you that it's fraught with peril. It's, it's a long, hard road and it's gonna cost us a lot of money, potentially a lot of, um, money to defend ourselves in court. So I, I just don't see that as, um, you know, a, a good course of action. Now, we might, based on, you know, uh, the state decision to respond to COVID, to close down the state's beaches or close down beaches and regions or, or, or give us authority to do that on a temporary basis. That may happen and it's probably beneficial. Well, I would support that. But in terms of like parking permit programs, an emergency otherwise, I just don't see it happening. Um, not at the coast of permission. It gonna happen. I guarantee it. And, you know, the power structure in the state of California is largely devolved to Southern California. And they won't have it. So I think what we have to look at are things, more modest, short-term approaches nested within a more comprehensive sort of economic development approach, making the beaches desirable, safe. You know, all that sort of thing. So I, I, I just think we'd be chasing our tails on a permit program. And as Bob says, potentially really negative consequences. As much as I see the value in it, I, I think that's I think that's, you know, not a way to go.
I see Deborah, uh, Penrose has her hand up. Go ahead, Debbie Penrose, Councilwoman Penrose. Uh, I think you have to take yourself off mute, De- Deborah.
I would have to agree with council member Rubik in, in the, uh, context that she puts the coastal commission, our city and our state in. But I, I do think there is a place to do some short-term work. And her idea about striping the streets, although it may be an expense, sounds like something that we could do. That's something that's within our control. That would give at least, at least help to the parking issue. The, the other thought that I have is I don't think it's the cities, I don't think the city has the ability to go around and police people who are defecating on citizens' lawns. I think that has to be something that is done by the neighborhood. And I think their involvement is critical in that. I don't think, I don't think we have the resources. We don't have the manpower. We don't have the money for that. I also think that increasing the number of trash receptacles, which we've done, but even maybe even more than we've done, and increasing the number of porta-potties is something that we could do in the short term. That's all.
In the intermediate term, we could stripe Venice Beach parking lot. If you look at the chart that Maz gave you, uh, you can see the largest number of potential available parking spots is at Venice Beach and Dunes Beach also. And I think we should head in the direction that Bob and Debbie have been talking about, where we work with state parks in whatever way we can to make those places not only more attractive, but also with, uh, signage. Uh, you know, you've all been to parking lots where you see a sign outside, there's three slots available. We could do the same thing with electronic meters. It's an intermediate, uh, step. It's not gonna happen right away, but it's not that difficult. And I think by getting more people to use Venice Beach, Dunes Beach and not Poplar Beach, I think we're gonna be doing, uh, a good for the neighborhoods, uh, in particular Alsace-Lorraine.
All, all right. So we have, I think, about four or five speakers left. We have, uh, five minutes of time. Um, is there any possibility we can do, uh, one, you know, one minute per speaker and try to get through and you can go through your pertinent issues? Give it a go. Go, Jessica.
Uh, Thea Sullivan, go ahead.
Oh, I only get the one minute? Ah, geez, I should have raised my hand sooner. Um, as, as I've been on several of these calls and as usual, I prepare my remarks and then you guys start talking and then I have to adjust my remarks. So I'll do it very quickly.
I, I don't see why we can't go over a little bit. We've been going over on these, uh, study sessions. So to go over ten minutes to allow the public to have their full time is reasonable from my perspective.
I, I appreciate that very much. Okay. So I'll try to slow down, but I'll still be, be quick. There's people after me. I, I wanted to say, um, some of the things I've been thinking have already been said. Uh, I would echo what Councilman Reddick has said, that creating a vision for how this works really needs to be the North Star and will give us short-term objectives that we need to meet as well as long-term um, uh, success. That includes the grants, the pilot projects and do it right is just absolutely critical. However, respectfully, I, I kind of take issue with, um, with not having any plan at all. And that is something that simply just needs to be addressed. Um, I would like to thank very much for, um, the city council and the city manager for taking care of us on July fourth. I was one of the neighborhoods that was heavily impacted at Memorial Day. Uh, my name is Thea Sullivan, by the way. I live in Miramar at three oh one Washington Boulevard. Um, and the changes that you made and the changes that you've already put in place with additional trash, additional signage and opening parking really made a difference for us. So I wanted to thank you for that. But now what is next? We still have visitors that need to come. I completely agree with the coastal commission's um, objective. People need, children need a place to go now more than ever. But the impact on parking our residential areas and trash, and I would absolutely include the wearing of masks and not wearing of masks, impacts us immediately. The report was great. I appreciate all the work going into it. It was not exhaustive. And what it was interesting is it talked a lot about history and that this is something that has plagued us for, for a long time. So we need to now create a plan to address it, or we're gonna be facing the same thing with potentially COVID two point O another year from now. And it could be that we make small steps to change it. There are great steps already in that document. Um, we just need to take action. For parking availability, I think that's the key thing people are talking about, safe parking. It's not that we're saying no parking, but safe parking. I'm glad the group is already talking about modernizing the parking. Um, and that is an interim step, but certainly a place to go. The signage, I thought, was a great point with people knowing the options and then knowing that they can't park in the neighborhoods. I even, I think even painting lines on the streets is a superway. People like to follow the rules. And so they'll, they'll park in the lines. This isn't, you know, other countries where they park anywhere. That's okay to say. Um, so this is an area that the council really should start to address, the safe parking. That addresses so many other actions. It, it addresses access. It would address, uh, safety on the streets. Um, so signage is really a critical area. Um, just skipping to the end, um, and kind of skipping over traffic calming, I would say that one area that wasn't truly covered in the report had to do with trash and restroom facilities. I just cannot say enough how important this is. It does impact different neighborhoods differently. I do believe it, it is a very difficult position and we're lucky in this state that we don't expect people to flash a gun in our face or hopefully not spit in our face, hopefully not trash our neighborhoods if we ask them to wear a mask and we ask them to pick up after themselves. But that is, I would consider the city's responsibility and the, the responsibility of our police force to help enforce these rules for us. So I would say the trash, waste bins, cleanup, making these places available, which could be immediate, is something that we need to do quickly so that people don't have the excuse to leave trash and make our neighbors, uh, our neighborhood dangerous and endangered. So I, I again would urge, and thank you for the additional time. We do look to you to lead and to bring us to the next generation. And we do hope more than ever that you give us a comprehensive plan and you have all these people willing to help you do that so that we can all be safe, short-term and long-term. Thank you very much.
Yeah, real quick, I love the garbage idea, you know, the, the, one, one thing that we've noticed though is, uh, if you put garbage cans there in any location, they seem to get filled. And dealing with, uh, all of that, um, obviously costs money. All right. Uh, next, go ahead.
Matthew Burisi, go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is Matt Buriashi. Uh, I live in the hundred block of Poplar Street. And, um, I, I read the staff report with a lot of interest. I, I was very interested in the traffic calming measures discussion. I was a little disappointed that there was a lot of focus on the emergency vehicles getting to the beach and not maybe so much about like what might generate some emergency vehicle trips from not having traffic calming. I think folks have already brought up that things like a bicycle and pedestrian safety, even of the visitors, is definitely impacted. But I have to say, uh, you know, I sit here and I watch people playing speed race around my street all hours of the day and night. Uh, they do ignore the stop signs. Hundred percent those aren't a good traffic calming measure. And i- it's picked up a little bit more urgency for me recently. I, I got a little one. She's, she's under two. We're trying to teach her not to go in the street. We have a gate that we set up. Um, but, you know, she, her friends, people walking to and from the beach, there's a lot of people whose response to the frustration of needing to get to the beach ten seconds sooner is to floor it, uh, after the stop sign at Railroad and Poplar, and they're going about fifty by the time they make it to the beach and vice versa. I'd really like us to think sooner rather than later about, uh, be it as part of the gateway project or something else, that we get, uh, some really hardcore traffic calming measures on Poplar, at least before Railroad and possibly even further up the street where I know lots of other neighbors who weren't here tonight have had complaints as well.
Good. Thank you for your input. I think, I'm not sure if you cut off or we lost you at the end, but we hear the traffic measures piece and there are other neighborhoods that have been requesting similar things. So thank you for your input.
Uh, next we have Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead.
Hello, thank you, uh, mayor and council members. I'm a born and raised San Mateo County guy with a, with a bit of a gripe as I'm listening in, and it's not really related to the plans around the parking. Although I'm sympathetic to, I, I think it's Sue Ranari who is mentioning about the plight and, and certainly people defecating in our neighborhoods is, is something we, we have to figure out. But I, I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments that were made regarding the Fourth of July and and how we can maybe navigate forward. And I'll be very quick. It's now my understanding from listening to the meeting tonight that really it's Dr. Morrow who has to give us direction. And, and since he is obviously not available to anybody, um, that creates a predicament. I think all jurisdictions that are on the list of eight, what we call the list of eight, all the, the interoperable jurisdictions, they have to all be put on notice immediately. That this is not a business as usual environment, that we're in the middle of a pandemic strike. And anybody that isn't available, I would think twenty-four seven, but certainly readily available for conversation should be terminated, dismissed, stepped down. They have to allow room for people that can operate within an emergency environment, which we're in right now. Uh, the public, I believe, is demanding immediate action here without any excuses. And, and we don't fear lawsuits and we don't fear the coastal commission. And we don't fear all these roadblocks that prohibit putting the health and safety of the people paramount to all these other roadblocks and objections. That's what we expect from you as leaders right now in the middle of a pandemic, is to take care of these people that have no choice but to be here and they can't protect themselves. So it's up to you and uh, the Fourth of July was a miracle and I was involved and that all just happened to work, but that was a citizen effort. This, going forward, we have to have a plan here. And we attempted it last week and we were unsuccessful. And I don't want to get into that, but I think history will show that the people that are not putting the health and safety of the public paramount are going to be in a one category in this moment and the rest will be in another. This is not business as usual here. And I'll conclude with just mentioning, we, we have to get our egos out of the way. I know that none of you signed up for this, but please, let's get Morrow forward. Let's get the, the list of eight, whoever they are. Let's get all those people to the table and, and discontinue conversation like that kids need to go to our beach. I mean, if that isn't the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, we're in the middle of a pandemic and we're worried that children need to go into a heightened virus zone for somebody's pleasure? I, I don't think so. I think we have to be adults here. And, and I really appreciate everybody coming forward with some leadership skills. I know we can do this. Uh, and, and we just have to, we just have to try harder, because so far, th- this ain't cutting it. And, and, and I know nobody signed up for it, so I don't want to be hard on anybody, but please, let's move forward with some good leadership here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brent, and thanks for all your efforts. Appreciate what you're doing for the city.
Uh, next we have Leanne Tarling. Leanne, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I just want to, first of all, thank you guys all for doing such a good job. I mean, in context of COVID nineteen, I get that this is super hard for everyone. And I really, really appreciated, uh, what happened on Fourth of July with the shutdown. That gave me such peace. I'm not kidding you. Um, I did, I will admit, I did sneak down to look over the bluff and um, at the end of the night and did see people down there, um, very privileged. Obviously, they got permission. Um, but quickly ran back to my own house. Um, I just want to, so much has been gone over already and I don't want to beat a dead horse. But I did have one thing to bring up, uh, Redondo Beach. No one's mentioned anything about that. There is a trash bin there, but there, I don't know who owns it. Um, it, are there porta-potties there? No. Uh, so that's definitely a health hazard. Um, that's just one thing. The other thing is the coastal commission, as Brent mentioned, I just feel like, why are we letting them crush us? This is a pand- This is a pandemic. This is different. This is not business as usual. And I don't see why, you know, yeah, okay. Oh, they'll sue us. Yeah, I get that. That is horrible. But what is happening now with everyone just, they're not wearing face masks. They are not being, I've seen beer pong tables brought down to Poplar Beach. These are, you know, they don't want to go, no, no one can go to college. No one can do this. No one can do that, but sorry. They can go to the beach and socialize and not wear masks and, you know, get drunk. And as Sue mentioned. You know, the goat pen was opened up the other night. Guess what? They weren't, those people weren't parked in the state beach parking, which was closed. They were parked in Al Sessler neighborhood. So I'm just, I do feel like this is urgent. This isn't, I get there's a long-term plan. We need a short-term plan. Tomorrow, we're probably going to be back on the watch list. And what's the next weekend going to look like? So thank you for listening and I do appreciate what you guys are doing. I do. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. Good input. Jessica, do we have anybody else?
Yeah, we have two more. Beth, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, great. It actually worked. This is my first time of being able to do the Zoom thing with you all and I just really want to congratulate you on the superb effort that you are doing. I'll be really brief and I'm sort of going to echo some of the things. Regarding COVID because that, I'm a health, I was a healthcare provider for a lot of years. And you know, I'm watching what's going on internationally and in the scientific literature and in our community. I'm, you know, concerned about our, our kids in school. I, I'm a mother. And I'm also concerned about our first responders and our. The people who are putting themselves on the line, including our teachers potentially in, in the fall, although I suspect locally. Things will be remote as they were this spring. I, I, like the prior speakers, am very concerned about the influx of people. And the disregard to the. Recommendation to wear masks while passing people on the paths on the coastal trail. And. You know, this. Because we don't have the exact facts for how far the aerosolized. Particles spread. We know that, yeah, they're a little, they may be deactivated by UV radiation, but we don't know how long. There's, and, and so it gets down to be considerate. Be, you know, be a good neighbor. Wear the mask if you can. And yes, there's a point zero five percent people who have a legitimate reason why they can't wear a mask. Obviously a lot more people are not wearing masks. There are communities in this country and obviously in many areas of the world. Where, I mean, I'm sorry, in this country, not community, that, that have made. Wearing a mask not only mandatory, but a fine, just like the current order from. The governor makes it a misdemeanor if you are. Not wearing a mask. I, I think it is within your power as leaders in this community to. Continue what you've been doing with educating the public, putting up more signage. And yes, enforcing it somehow and, and, and. It's setting, setting examples, getting people aware. And, you know, I would, the, the, we know if eighty-five percent wear masks, we're going to be able to open up our economy sooner. And, you know, it, it frustrates me. To see people I know putting their lives on the line to care for people. Who didn't wear masks. Who got, who, who got infected by people who didn't wear masks and are, are ending up in the hospital and putting people I know. In a life and death situation. You know. In, in, in my career, hepatitis and HIV were. Big unknowns that all of a sudden came out and we had no idea how to take care of them when they first hit. And we were putting our lives on the line. You know, that, that incidental stick in the operating room. Was potentially a death sentence. And that's a fraction of what people are, are dealing with. A prior spoke speaker also mentioned. The kids and I think that's a big, big area where there's an opportunity to really. Talk science. They know it. They get it. And. This isn't, you know, with, with the transmission that's been documented now and under nineteen-year-olds. They can carry this home. They can give it to their teachers and yes. Significant percent. A non-zero percent will get serious complications. Lifelong complications. It's like giving a kid asthma from, instead of just having a flu, they end up with asthma for the rest of their lives. The damage occurs in their lungs. Anyway, those were my, my thoughts that I wanted to share and I appreciate everybody's patience in giving me a chance to say.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, last speaker.
We, we have two more with their hands raised. They're new raised hands though, and so I'm wondering at this point if some of our attendees may think that we're in the public forum section of our seven o'clock meeting.
Okay.
I don't know how to clarify that, but up to you on how you want to move forward. We could.
Why don't you just ask them real quick?
Okay. And Nicholas, are you here for the beach access study sex, study session or the seven o'clock regular meeting?
Oh, yes, I'm here for the, both of the meetings. More, more in line with the school district meeting, so I'll hold my comments for them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And then Susan, did you have comments on the beach access study session or public forum?
Well, I had planned to speak at the public forum, but they're related to beach access, so I can hold off if you prefer, but. They're very relevant to the, the previous.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Susan Swer. I've lived in Westside Half Moon Bay for more than twenty years. I'm very close to the water, so I understand and appreciate the challenges with respect to. Parking, trash and all that has gone before. My perspective, however, is, is quite different in that. My purpose for being here is to ask that we remain compassionate to the needs of others and that going forward, we only take actions to close the beaches. As a matter of extreme emergency and I would suggest that this is not at a level yet where it is an extreme emergency. If we're going to take such actions, then I suggest that this only be. In coordination with the county health officer as well as the state and, and county and, and coastal commission. I would ask you to consider the following points. According to the county health officer, many, many of the transmissions of COVID nineteen are because of people socializing in small groups. Without taking the basic precautions. Of wearing masks and social distancing. It is the close-up interaction that most increases the risk. People who are willing to socialize like this will do this at the beach or elsewhere. And I can tell you that. Just from my time, you know, being around Half Moon Bay, I see plenty of groups of. Youth and others who congregate and, and don't pay attention to these things. So I don't feel like the risk is certainly increased. At the beach relative to what I'm seeing just when I'm out and about in, in Half Moon Bay. And certainly this behavior is not unique to visitors. I appreciate there's no such thing as no risk, but I think we can require people to wear masks and social distance. And that this in itself will reduce much of the risk. I, I heard one of the previous. Commenters indicate that if, if eighty-five percent of people wearing masks, much of this problem would disappear. I think we should continue to refuse service to those who do not comply. Additionally, there are important health benefits for people going to the beach. Some people talked about the importance of kids going. But elevated mental health problems are a major and growing concern in the United States. A recent US census, and this is from a couple of months ago, found that one-third of all Americans suffer from anxiety or depression. At much higher levels than evident before the disease. Research has proven that spending time near the water is important to emotional and physical wellbeing. I highly recommend the book, The Blue Mind, which offers extensive detail on the science of water's healing power. Notably, while Half Moon Bay beaches were closed over the Fourth of July, the Santa Cruz beaches were open and as you'd expect, they were filled with beachgoers. I've looked at the numbers and they didn't have the same levels of COVID nineteen as Half Moon Bay. They've had a spike as the whole Bay area has, but not at the levels you'd expect to see if beachgoers were going to be the problem for us. I've heard the concerns about trash bathrooms, parking lots. Surely those issues are solvable. We are not in the same boat as Florida or Orange County, California, and I feel like those comparisons are really wholly unfair. When we look at the COVID, the county's COVID nineteen statistics, our most vulnerable population is the Hispanic community. Of the cases where ethnicity has been identified in the county statistics, more than sixty percent of the cases are within the Hispanic population. While I do not know how that translates to Half Moon Bay. I would respectfully ask the city council to consider how much more help can be made available to this community. So much of our focus seems to be on the beaches and I think that there are other areas of vulnerability that we need to address. I would also ask that we increase the inclusiveness and transparency of our decision-making regarding beach closures. If you recall, Mayor Eisen actually went to the media before the Fourth of July. Event where Gavin Newsom closed the beaches and asked tourists to stay away. I believe that Mayor Eisen's actions were very well-intended. It was intended to be protective. But I am bothered by these efforts being separate from county health or other agency requirements. I'm also bothered that this was, this was not the result of an agreement within the city council. To me, it gave the appearance of Mayor Eisen. I would ask the city council to work to be more conclus- inclusive of gathering resident and business community input, including the Chamber of Commerce perspective. If appropriate, you may want to consider forming an open and transparent community group sponsored by the city council. Finally, I'd like to express my appreciation for Bob Nisbet and his staff for the extraordinary effort and sacrifice. Sacrifices required of all of them to provide support over the Fourth of July weekend. Thank you very much.
All right. All good comments. Thank you. And I mean, just to address the, the issue that you brought up. Can we, Bob, can you talk about how the decision on Fourth of July and, and how that went about?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly do that since it came up. The Fourth of July weekend has been mentioned by several speakers. Alluding to the fact that, yeah, a decision was made at various levels to close the beaches. And to get into the points that were made on the effectiveness of that and how it came about. And the reason that actions were taken as they were. The, the governor, I think it's been acknowledged. Did a press conference on July first and took, made an executive order to direct the closing of state beach parking lots. It was when we heard that order and, and don't get me wrong, there was a lot of factors that probably led into that. So I'm not making any comments about how the governor got to that point, but he did. After that happened, we were then in a position where we had to take action. We had no choice. So whether we were doing it for the right reasons, the wrong reasons, or anywhere in between. What we knew we couldn't accept, or at least in my mind at that point in time, was closing the state beach parking lots, but not closing the beaches. We had done that early in the response collectively, when I say we, to the, to the pandemic. And there were lots of things that we learned from that and I think it was. The belief of many people in this community, your council, myself included, that that did not work. If you're going to close the parking lots, you have to close the beaches too. So we learned from that and we adapted. So is the governor, I guess, again, not challenging the decision the governor made. But did not get the same data that we got in terms of observations of why that failed. Made the decision to close parking lots. We then felt that we were, we had no choice but to close the beach. By doing that, the state parks was also in a position where they could leave their beaches open. But they realized we were, the city was going to close Poplar Beach. Lots of pressure was put on them. Again, I won't get into who did what. But the outcome was that state parks then understood. That if the city was closing our beach Poplar, that they would follow suit. And we even went a step further for management purposes and closed a portion of the coastal trail and then the state followed suit with that. So there was a chain reaction of lots of events that happened for that. And I agree that it was very successful and we can talk about, I was planning to talk about that more, a little bit more in the agenda. But to the, to the speaker's comment, she mentioned transparency. I would like to set the record straight on that. At that point in time, a decision had to be made based on what the governor did on July first. July fourth weekend was only two days away and the council had already bestowed in myself. The emergency powers, we have declared an emergency and at that time I did have. The authority to make that decision. So I did make that decision. I felt it was the right thing to do and I stand by that decision. We do have an item on the agenda, which is required by law. Later in the agenda and certain council members can, can speak to it at that time as well. Where, where, when the city manager makes a decision like that using emergency powers, it has to be ratified by the council at the. At the next available council meeting. So that's what the action is, even though the Fourth of July now is in the rearview mirror. The council does have to ratify that decision and that does give the ability for the council to have a short discussion, I would assume about. About whether that was effective and what direction the council might like to give me, the city manager in the future. In guiding if we were to make such a decision again. Again, in that particular case, governor came out, closed state parks. I felt we had no choice as a city and then moved to make the decision to close the beach and the state parks, like I said, followed suit.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that response. It, it always makes me angry when people say that we're not transparent. Because I do believe that this council strives to be as transparent as possible. In every respect of what we do and in all aspects. So I, I actually take personal exception to those comments and I hope the rest of council does as well. Because this is quite an open and transparent council. We make that one of our top priorities. So. I just want to let that be known. But obviously everybody can see that there are people like Sue. Who feel like we should just continue as is and no worries. And then there's people like Brent who feel like we need to shut everything down immediately. So you've got total two sides of an argument. We're hearing it from both sides consistently. Myself definitely hear from many constituents daily and these are tough decisions. And it's tough times and we do want to make sure that we are protecting the citizens of Half Moon Bay. While also making sure that we are doing our part to be stewards of the coast side and grant access to people. For their mental health and the different aspects. These are, these are not easy things and I hope. If you were listening, that you understood that all the comments were completely contrary to. Everybody else's comments. So everybody's got different perspectives for their own reasons. And it's hard to figure out the right path entirely, but we are doing our transparent best. As part of this conversation and we will be leading into another conversation to even go further into this as we enter the council meeting. So I appreciate everybody participating and hearing everybody's opinion. With that, I think we can end the study session. I think we need to do a ten-minute break. In order to get everything set up for the city council meeting. It's seven twenty-six. I say let's, can we do seven thirty-five? Nine minutes. We should be able to probably get all that stuff transitioned and we can start up the regular council meeting. I believe it's on the same link. Jessica?
Everyone can just stay here.
Everybody can stay here. Exactly. Debbie, I'm so sorry. I missed that. Go ahead.
Does staff need some sort of direction coming out of this particular meeting?
Does staff need some sort of direction coming out of this particular meeting?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Ruttick, uh, I can do a very quick summary on the direction that I believe I heard. And if everyone agrees, then we'll continue from there and I assume we'll be back. So I heard several speakers and also the council agree and say it themselves that we should compartmentalize our actions into short-term, midterm and long-term. So in, in noting that, I'm putting the following in the short-term category from what we heard. Uh, the low-hanging fruit that we heard from several are things that we're already doing. Garbage, porta potties and enforcement. We will continue to do our best on enforcing bad behavior, uh, putting garbage cans where they need to be and making sure they get picked up and making sure that bathrooms and porta potty, uh, parties are open, clean and available as much as possible. So that is short-term and things that we're already doing. Moving on to the midterm, uh, and maybe this is a little bit short-term. The idea, uh, that Councilmember Ruttick had to look at, uh, striping where you can park in neighborhoods as opposed to where you can't park and seeing if that is a better alternative to permit parking is something that we will pursue and I put that in the midterm category. Uh, also I put in this category, but we'll start right away. Uh, I got the impression that there was confirmation to have a conversation with Dr. Morrow and pursue this idea of whether or not he would agree that there are findings to, um, to make this a health emergency that would give a, give the council potentially more options, uh, moving forward. So that was started and we'll move on that. And then in the long term, I heard mo- mostly agreement that we need to really push on state parks and the partnership there so we can do some of the creative things that we all recognize will take longer, um, the, the parking in real-time idea, uh, managing the parking and then signage. Of the four categories that, uh, Mr. Doughty and his team put forth, uh, we heard general consensus, I think that signage, good signage and parking management are kind of no brainers, but recu- there was recognition that those will take longer. That, so that was the summary of my notes, uh, if that's a good way to put it.
Very good. Is there anything that anybody needs to add in real quick before we move on?
Yeah, I have one thing to add.
Please.
I think we brought it up earlier in the week, Adam, when we had our meeting with Bob. But when, when we're talking about signage, especially at the intersection, intersection of, uh, ninety-two and one, um, we mentioned that in addition to beaches north, right? Uh, there's also a whole bunch of beaches south, you know, down to Pescadero, which at any given moment, um, often have plenty of parking, can be varied degrees of filled or not. And frankly, there's some beautiful beaches and a lot of my friends are saying, why the hell don't people drive south? There's great beaches down there. So, but they don't know. The other thing that, uh, I, I'm, I'm not sure if this relates to an action or not. Um, you know, we haven't talked about our own emphasis on mandatory masks or not. Beth, I think who it was, who's on the front lines, who describes her experiences, I thought were very moving. And I personally go crazy when I see people not wearing masks. You know, you all have these bandanas, right? This is not inconvenient to pull up a bandana. It is not inconvenient. So I have zero tolerance for anyone who puts at risk the health of my neighbors and friends and everyone in this community because they think this is inconvenient. That doesn't fly. I don't quite know how, what our solution is to really enforce that yet, but I think we're going to need to address that. The last thing I want to say, in terms of this dynamic between people who think we should start closing down beaches again, to people who think everything is okay, um, and Scott Morrow being involved or not, you know, there's points where I think communities and neighbors need to take certain actions. And I don't know what we need, you know, Bob, to document some of basically the disgusting conditions that people are finding in their neighborhoods. And I would recommend that people in those neighborhoods start pulling together videos, photos, whatever, which we can, um, put together, send to the coastal commission. I mean, I can't imagine some of the things I've seen that the coastal commission would say, hey, this, this is not a, this is not an unsafe health condition. So let's gather that data. If Scott Morrow can help us, uh, and wants to act on that, okay, great. If he doesn't, what is the option? Will the state back us up if we feel the conditions are getting bad enough that we need to close beaches again? If we close our beach, will they back us up? I mean, the CDC says that the amount of infection rate is ten X, right? I've seen that all over the papers this week. That's incredible. So, you know, to, um, Councilmember Ruttick's point earlier, if, you know, our, our, if our infection rate's only five percent, does that mean it's actually up to fifty, higher than Florida? I mean, these are things that really keep me up at night wondering about. So what's going to be our trigger point? You know, how do we define our trigger point as leaders for if we need to close beaches again, if things are being overwhelmed in our neighborhoods? So I think, I think we owe it to the community, you know, if not right now, to have further conversations about that. Either have another meeting, whatever it's going to take. But I am concerned about, yeah, what do we do if things get worse? What's the trigger point? Will the state back us up if we need to do it again? July Fourth, we knew was going to be a bad situation because the parking lots were closed and we knew there was, we didn't want to repeat of Memorial Day. What I'm hearing is that in some neighborhoods, they feel that those same emergency conditions are around the corner. So just want to say, we hear you and we're going to figure out a way moving forward on how we can, uh, make those determinations.
Yeah, I, I like the comments. And I, I also liked, I think it was, I, it might've been Sue who was saying, you know, let's listen to our health experts, like, Dr. Morrow, I'm no doctor. You know, Dr. Morrow is a doctor and he has the best authority in our county for how we should move forward, what is safe and what is not. You know, a, a lot of us think certain things are safe. A lot of us think a lot of things are unsafe. No, nobody really knows the answers and I'm not even sure if Dr. Morrow does either, but at least that's an authority that we can point to. Whereas, uh, you know, the, the rest of us, besides maybe Councilwoman, uh, Penrose, you know, we, we don't have a medical background. So it's, uh, I, I, I definitely think it's a little harder for us to know facts per se. So we can leave it there. Um, excellent discussion. I actually wish we had more time to discuss this in greater detail, but there's also a multitude of other things to discuss. We have to get into the council meeting. So here we go. We're going to take a ten-minute break at seven thirty-four. Uh, we'll be back at, uh, seven forty-four and, uh, we will, we'll start the council meeting there. You do not need to get off of this. Just go ahead and mute yourself and, uh, take your picture off. We'll be back in nine minutes.